Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for being here. We will now call this meeting to order. I want to welcome you all to our city commission meeting here. We will go ahead and get started. First meeting of August, August 6th. Start with the roll call in District 1.
Deandre Knox in District 1.
Keith Love, District 2.
I'm Aboue, Commissioner-at-Large.
Dedrick Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner-at-Large.
Chris Sharp, District 3.
Jamie Clark, District 4.
All right, thank you very much. Let the record reflect, quorum has been established. We have everyone here present. This time we will have our invocation and today for our invocation, we have our very own Mr. John Branson, who's going to lead us in prayer. Thank you very much. Following which, we will have Commissioner Abel Garza, would you like to lead us in the pledges?
Good evening. If you would, please stand and pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight to conduct the city's business. We thank you for the mayor and the city commission and for their willingness to do what they do for the city of Texas City. Lord, we pray now that the actions that they take tonight will be pleasing to you and in accordance with your will. Father, we thank you for the blessings. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for everything. We pray all these things in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas pledge.
In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Branson, for that prayer and thank you Commissioner Garza for leading us in the pledges.
Yes, sir, thank you.
At this time, we are at the point of our agenda for reports. Every commission meeting, we try to have reports from different representatives representing the different departments in the city of Texas City. And today, we will hear from our city engineer, Ms. Kim Golden, as she gives us a report on Engineering, Transportation, and Planning Department. Ms. Golden?
Thank you, Mayor. The PowerPoint, would you put the PowerPoint up, please? I don't know if I can move it, Ramari. Would you mind moving it for me? Okay. All right, so Mayor, Commissioners, we're happy to bring this report to you on behalf of the Engineering and Planning, Building and Inspections Departments. I mean, just to let you know that we're all eager to hear this, I'd like to recognize the folks from that department who are here today, if they could stand up and say hello for you. These are the folks responsible for all this good information. Next one, Ramari. So, of course, we're located out on Emmett F. Lowry. We're co-located with Public Works in the former Daily News building. Next one. And the Engineering and Planning Department is organized, you know, we're kind of just have a few people doing a lot of work, myself and, of course, our admin assistant and then Veronica Keryanas are planning, zoning technician Kurt Kelly, our Engineering and Planning Administrator, and then Duncan Nyper is still with us as a consulting engineer. Next. And the highlights in the past year have been that we continue to administer the balanced growth throughout the city. We also staff the Planning Board, Zoning Commission, and Board of Adjustments. We've promoted the public-facing GIS-based zoning search tool, which a lot of people are becoming familiar with and getting good feedback. And then this year, in collaboration with the Neighborhood Improvement folks, we have worked towards a kiosk sign program to replace those bandit signs, so that people can find all these great houses that are being built. Next slide. Next slide. And just to give you some context, again, you know, we've got good population growth in Texas City. Since the census, we've had 11% growth, that's through 2024, which is about 2.5% annually. I will tell you, I did try to get 2025 numbers, but you know, there's a little redistricting thing going along. It's real hard to put your hand on some population numbers right now, so. Next slide. So, these are our numbers, and I'm really proud of them. It takes a little bit, so let's just walk through them. So, master plans, we are a little bit ahead of where we were this time, I mean, last year. We have had the Lagomar East Master Plan that got approved in 2025, which is, you know, quite big. But then if you look at the lots that have been preliminarily platted, as of the end of August, we have exceeded our total for 2024. And as far as final plats, we are double where we were in 2024. And then if you look at acreage, of course, that Lagomar East is a very large master-planned community, but even if you look at the others, you'll see that we've just about doubled where we were last year, or where we were at the end of last year, 2024. And then we're right in line with our development plans and our final plats being recorded. So, I think this is good information for you guys to have as you're looking at your budget, so that you've got an idea that we have a very steady pipeline coming. Go ahead, next one, please, Ramari. And so, this is what I call our pipeline. You'll see that we have either in construction or ready to start construction, just under 1,000 lots on 300 acres. We have in the process of plating right now another little over 1,000 lots on about 350 acres. And then we have 2,000 lots that are in pre-development with us, and this means that people have paid money and have engineers working with us on their master plans. Next one. And so, once we get them platted and lots ready to go, then the Building and Inspection staff helps us get them built. And so, we've grown this department a little bit. We've been able to add some additional staff, and the whole thing is about customer service and giving our builders and our homeowners timely service. Next slide. And so, the highlights in Building and Inspections is we've got 48 permit types and 119 different types of inspections. We do help with the certificates of occupancy for both residential and commercial. We have a role in the abatement of substandard structures through remodeling instead of tearing them down. Let's see if they can be remodeled. We did this year have opportunity to work with Community Development to help with the construction of a few of their new houses. And then this is what we're really proud about. We've had two plumbing inspectors that obtained their certifications, and all six have maintained their certifications. And that takes a lot of work in terms of study and hours and tracking information. Next slide. So, here are their numbers. Last year was a really banner year for us in 2024 in terms of the number of permits issued, over 3,000. We are right at 1,200 as of the end of August. The new residential permits in 2024 were a record at over 900. We're not quite there right now, but I think it's because everybody's working on the permits that were issued. The certificates of occupancy, we're actually ahead of last year, and the total number of inspections, again, we're on trend and have not abated any substandard structures this year. Next slide. And so, this is that information represented graphically. You'll see that we're, you know, a little bit behind where we were last year, but on track with the previous years. Next. And so, just to put a name to some of the development that's going on in the last five years, we've had 24 new restaurants that have gotten certificates of occupancy and come to Texas City. Next slide. We've had 33 other retail and general businesses, and again, this is a five-year number. This is the five-year. Next one. And then just to show you how balanced we are, we also have significant development going on in industrial, medical, and the public sector. The school districts have been very busy in the last five years. Next slide. And so, one of the big things we're really proud of in Building and Inspections is that we have converted our online permitting system to a new one called MGO. This is GIS-based, and we're also in the process of working it to where it plays nice with our finance system, so that it becomes very integrated. And again, it's a much more user-friendly system and something the public can access their information through. And so, we've been working to get all that configured. We went live with it in June. We still actually have both systems working, and we plan to sunset the old system in September. So, the guys are working in both systems right now, but we're in that process. Next slide. Do want to give you a quick update about what's going on in your tax increment reinvestment zone in Lagomar. Next slide. So, since the life, can you move that over to the other? Since the TERS began, you can look at your total tax base. So, in other words, this is the value of the tax base. Started out with a baseline of $400,000, both residential and commercial combined, and is now at about 1.2 billion, or 1.18 is the 2024 value. So, that is a significant, significant growth there in Lagomar, which is, you know, what the plan was. Also, at the top, you'll see about 2,600 completed homes as of the end of 2024 in Lagomar. Next slide. And so, this shows you what that value is generating in terms of the tax increment revenue that's going into the zone. And you can see that it's been steadily increasing, and we're now at just about 2.3 million that is going into the TERS to be used for the projects there. But the next slide is what I really want you to see. Go to the next one, please. So, this is showing the green line, the top line is the total increment, but the bottom line, the orange line, is how much of that was commercial, and the blue line is residential. And so, you can see that the tax increment being contributed from residential has now passed commercial and is continuing to increase. So, next slide. So, coming soon, one of the reasons we converted our building permit system is that we now have the capacity to add our engineering and planning to that web-based permitting system, so that we can get, you know, a pipeline of our permitting system going on as well. And so, that's going to be our next big thing that we're moving towards, and it will also enable us to do electronic plan review, both of the building plans and of our engineering and planning. We are going to be working with parks and a master parks plan. We're working to, on the continued improvements of water and sewer building renovation here at 7800 Emmett F. Lowry. And then the next thing, we've got a couple of traffic signal projects I want to put on your radar. Next. So, in Lagomar, they've already had the, they've already had the pre-construction meeting. There are three projects that are being done actually through the mud that will be adding traffic signals to existing intersections. One will be at Lagomar and Crystal View. It's on the other end of Crystal View from where the existing traffic signal is. There'll be a new one added at Lagomar Boulevard and Lago Crossing, and then at Lago Crossing and Hughes Road. Of course, Lago Crossing and Hughes Road is near the site of the new elementary school, and the plans are that that will be in operation well before the school opens. Next slide. Then we've got two other traffic signal projects that are in design right now, and we expect to have bid packages available in September. One of them is to replace the signal that used to be at 9th Avenue and 6th Street, that's now the four-way stop sign. And then another one that we've looked at in the traffic study supports converting from the flashing beacon at 25th and 9th Street to turn that into a full signalized intersection. So, you will be seeing, I believe, in your budget for the next fiscal year, the construction funding for those two traffic signal projects. So, next slide. And this is something I want to get you all to help promote. It is, this is, information is listed on all the city websites and communications. This helped us put it out on social media, but if you guys would also just personally do this and then also promote it to your circles. This is our regional transportation plan that HGAC is conducting. Typically, Texas City and this end of the county are not well-represented in these regional because nobody answers the surveys, so this is your opportunity to answer a survey. It's a really simple survey. It's got nine questions about your own transportation habits, and it's got some questions about your demographics and do you want to stay connected. You can use this little picture thing on your phone, you can call them, you can email them, you can Google RTP 2050 survey, and it pops right up. But if we can just work together to get some responses, it would really help be sure Texas City is represented in this master transportation plan. And next slide. And I'd be glad to answer any questions, and we just appreciate the opportunity to do what we're doing here in Texas City, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Appreciate the presentation. Commissioners, do either of you have any questions of Ms. Kim Golden?
Good report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kim.
Very thorough. I do want to underscore the last slide, and we'll have that for you all on our website, if not our social media, but we want to really push our input on the transportation surveys so that we can be represented, or at least our concerns represented, when it comes to the regional plan. Thank you again. Next, we have a report from our Texas City Fire Department led by Chief Dennis Harris.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and community. So, over the past few months, we've talked a lot about ambulance chassis and modules and remounts, and several of the Commissioners and even some of the citizens have asked me, what is this? So, we were just going to give just a quick update on how our fleet is faring right now. We've got our EMS Administrator, Assistant Chief, and one of the fire marshals here to answer any questions. They wanted this presentation to be very long, but as you can see, this is all of the medic units that we have or had. We're working to get our fleet kind of in a better situation, our reserve or backup fleet also. So, as you see, the first two on here, Medic 11 and Medic 10, you see Medic 11 was in an accident. It was totaled out. We have four stations right now, and each of them have a medic unit or an ambulance there. For us, operationally, we would like each of those stations to have something that is reasonably new, it doesn't create a lot of maintenance issues, and have enough backups, or we call them reserve units, to service the community and not inhibit our operational readiness, so. So, this is kind of just a summary of what we've been experiencing and how we ended up getting to where we're at. We have a great plan. So, one of the reasons we wanted to talk about this is coming up, you will see some more ambulance remount requests, and even there's a new ambulance in there that will be added in there also. So, I just wanted you all to know, we're not requesting those just out of wants, those are actually needs for the community. Thank you. So, Medic 20, we just put up, and this is just in the last few months. That's how much maintenance that Medic 20 has cost us, and this unit is nine years old. So, if we can get that unit into a reserve status, it spends a lot of time at the shop. Next slide. This is Medic 30. This unit is at the station out by the college, Station 3. As you see at the bottom, this is just recent repairs. Transmission, and this unit also, it's a 2016. So, one of the issues with medic units is it's not just the mileage, those units are running the entire time. So, if they are on scene working on a patient, they can't cut the unit off. So, it not only has the mileage on it, it also has a lot of engine hours on it. So, just in the past few months, 58,000. We've had an engine blown, a transmission, fuel pump. When they get to this age, we'd like to get them really out of the fleet. Next slide. That is our, we call it Medic 11 now, but it used to be Medic 10, and the accident it was involved in was, it was rear-ended. They were stopped on scene on 45, and they got hit from behind by an 18-wheeler. The firefighters that were in that unit were both injured, and one of them was off work for what? Two years, for him to recover and get back. So, that unit is totaled, and we're working on getting it replaced. And, yes. What?
That's just a model picture.
Okay, yeah, good. That's just, so this is Medic 15, that's what I'm looking for. This unit was involved in an accident, and it also got totaled. The two units that I've just mentioned, they were two of our newest units. I think this one's what, a 2021, maybe? 2021, that's newer than anything we had, and they got totaled. Neither, the accidents weren't our fault, but these units are off the books, and these units put us in a good place as far as reserves and primary units. Is that all the slides? So, we brought you all the good news and the bad news, all at the same time. We will be coming back to get those remounts, and they are planned, but just so you all know upfront, this is what we're doing.
Chief, can you let them know how much an ambulance, brand-new, typically costs and what the turnaround time or the wait time is to have those?
Would you like to take that?
So, a new ambulance roughly costs about $300,000. And right now, the turnaround time for any brand-new unit, not a remount, is 12 to 18
So, I told them all the time, we would love to be able to go to the dealership and just point at one and drive it home, but delivery time is, like you said, 12 to 18 months, and so, we would like to, we're already working on these. I just wanted to let everyone know, that's the status of the fleet right now.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, do I have any other questions?
Chief, do these, do these units generate revenue?
I'm glad you asked that. Mr. Wyatt, do you know how much revenue these units have generated?
Last year, $2.3 million, and right now, we're on pace for $2.5 to $2.6 million.
So, it's not like it's any out-of-pocket expense. I mean, it's...
Oh, it's very much an out-of-pocket expense.
Not when they generate that kind of...
Oh, even the millions they generate, we need to consider the expenses of the operational expenses of the fire department. A fire truck alone is probably 1.5 million. This is just the ambulance. So, fire trucks are very expensive in addition to the upkeep and medical equipment that we spend, and so. But outside of revenue generation, we all know that ambulances and fire trucks are an integral part of our community, right? Whether they, whether they generate money or not, we can't exist as a municipality without them. But while they do generate money, oftentimes in forms of the medical services we provide, there's a mountainous amount of expenses that come with operating the fire and EMS departments, so.
So, when you call 911, we want to respond, and we don't want to show up in this, units like this, so. It is an expensive business, though.
Yeah, and I think I'm saying the same thing you all are, is that, hey, it costs $300,000, but they generate, so it's a wash. I mean, it's a pretty good deal.
I like that, I like that. Stop, stop, finances looking at me, I got to get out of here.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. At this time, we're going to open up a public hearing. It's 5:26, 5:24, actually. Open up public hearing, we have three items on our agenda for the public hearing. The first item is to consider and approve the Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, 2025 Consolidated Plan, and Annual Action Plan. And this is our second public hearing on this item. We have with us Ms. Patricia Mata.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I move this?
Yes.
All right. Ramari, are you going to move it?
Yeah.
Okay, hold on. My name is Patricia Mata. I serve as the Program Coordinator for Community Development and Grant Administration. Today's public hearing is being held to provide information and present on two essential planning documents for community development. The 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan and the Program Year 2025 Annual Action Plan, both documents are required by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development as a condition for receiving Community Development Block Grant funding. The con-plan, the con-plan, the Consolidated Plan is completed every five years and describes the community's needs, resources, priorities, and proposed activities to be undertaken during the five years. The Annual Action Plan is submitted every year based off of the Consolidated Plan and describes more specific usage for the CDBG program. The Consolidated Plan includes five fundamental components, the needs assessment, housing market analysis, the five-year strategic plan, the Annual Action Plan, and citizen participation. The needs assessment and the housing market analysis come from census data provided by HUD and other resources out there. This upcoming program year, we are expected to receive $432,691 for the annual action, to execute the Annual Action Plan. And backing up a little bit about what the Community Development Block Grant Fund entails and eligible uses, not all of these, not, I don't know if everyone can see, I'll go ahead and read it out. CDBG program has access to a variety of activities geared toward HUD's national objectives. The eligible uses include public improvements, street sidewalks, parks, sewers, et cetera, public facilities, neighborhood centers, nonprofit centers, homeless facilities, rehabilitation of residential and non-residential buildings, acquisition of land or real property for eligible activities, economic development activities, public services including healthcare, homeless services, literacy, youth development, and senior services, and planning and administration. Thank you. In reviewing the needs assessment and analysis, our department has these together. The city's needs and developed associated goals outlined in the con-plan and the Annual Action Plan, it was made available here at City Hall and also online. You can go back one more. Sorry, I was just going to talk about it just very quickly. The document is over 150 pages, so I'm not going to bring up the document, and it has a lot of information. I encourage everybody to take a look at it. Just to touch on the priority needs from those assessments and analysis, one of our goals, or a few of our goals, are listed here, preserving the existing housing stock, public services and quality life improvements, improving infrastructure and neighborhood conditions, enhancing the community planning capacity, excuse me. I get nervous talking in public, so sorry if I'm rushing through this.
Take your time.
You can go to the next slide, Ramari. So, the upcoming program's allocation is broken down by projects as listed according to HUD's allocation and guidelines, totaling the allocation amount, which is $432,691. So, in closing, Community Development Block Grant program is a powerful tool for progress. With thoughtful planning and strong communication input, we can continue making smart investments in our city's future, investments that uplift families, strengthen neighborhoods, and ensure better quality of life for everyone in Texas City. I thank you for your time and your commitment this evening. Take questions if there are any.
Commissioners, do I have any questions of Ms. Patricia Mata relative to the community? Could you go back one slide, please? Relative to our CDBG allocation for this year, I think it's $432,691.
That's good.
Is there anyone here present who wishes to speak or comment in favor of this Community Development Block Grant presentation? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against anything you heard in this CDBG allocation? Yes, sir. You can make your way to the podium. Once you get here, sir, be sure and state your full name and let us know your concern. Once you get here, sir, be sure and state your full name and let us know your concern.
My apologies, Mayor, the City Commissioners, Henry Gomez. I have been, through several years, been looking through the Community Development Block Grant and the director of the block grant has failed to comply with the Texas Open Records Act. And I believe the mayor should actually know about the information that I requested. Basically, what I would like to do, uh, I've been trying to do this for years, uh, find out how, how they are spending the money, how much money is being spent, looking at the contracts, uh, after they, uh, finish the contract and look at how much money was spent. And, uh, basically, we have been denied that information and I blame it on the director, not the mayor, not the employees, but the director of the Community Development Block Grant. And I believe she needs to be replaced and I thank the mayor.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who has comments on the CDBG two-thousand-twenty-five Action Plan? All right.
Motion to close public hearing.
Uh, not quite, we just moved, we got two or three more things here. Thank you very much, Ms. Mata. Okay. Still in the public hearing, moving on to item B. Uh, public hearing to receive comments regarding, uh, amending the Code of Ordinances Title Fifteen, entitled Land Usage, Chapter One-Sixty, entitled Zoning, to designate Section one-sixty-point-zero-five-one District SP Site Plan as the zoning designation for battery energy storage systems and similar projects. Ms. Kim Golden?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So when you get to the regular agenda items, one of the things that's going to be on there is the third and final reading of the ordinance, um, creating the best chapter. But that ordinance is also changing the zoning ordinance to specifically make best projects required to go into a District SP zone. And so anytime you change the zoning ordinance, you have to have a public hearing about that change to the zoning ordinance. And so that's what this public hearing is about. It's specifically making the requirement that the battery energy storage system projects have to go through rezoning to be zoned into a District SP zone. Um, the zoning commission has considered that and is making a recommendation to you to approve that change to the zoning ordinance. The meeting was held March twenty-fifth, two-thousand-twenty-five, and the minutes of that meeting are attached in Agenda Quick. And that's, that's the purpose of this public hearing and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Commissioners, does anybody have any questions, Ms. Golden? Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of this, um, zoning designation of battery energy storage systems to District SP Site Plan? In favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition of this zoning designation? Thank you very much, Ms. Golden. Next, we're gonna move to the third and, uh, final part of this public hearing. Section C, Public Hearing for Comments on the Zoning Change of Thirty-eight-point-six-five-three acres from District H Heavy Industry to District SP Site Plan for a Battery Energy Storage System located in an area south of the Gulf Coast Water Authority Canal, north of Moses Bayou, east of South Humble Camp Road, and west of property owned by the Galveston Bay Area Foundation. Ms. Golden?
Ramari, can you pull up the map? Let's see the vicinity map. So this is just showing the general location of the project up there, um, in northern reaches. I think maybe the next map here is the specific site. Um, so this public hearing is about the rezoning of a specific site for a specific battery energy, battery energy storage system project. This is the Red E-Grit LLC project at what we call the Atwater Location. Um, it's on thirty-eight-point-six-five-three acres. It is, uh, it has been through the Planning Board, which has approved a site plan subject to the rezoning. It has been to the zoning commission, which is recommending the zoning change to you all. Minutes of those meetings, the staff report, everything was attached, um, in Agenda Quick and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Commissioners, any questions about this rezoning request? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning request? Ms. White, make your way on up.
Your secretary helped me fill out the paper, so I hope this is right.
No problem.
Anyway.
Just for future reference, uh, when you want to speak during a public hearing, you don't have to fill out the paper.
Oh.
But if you wanna speak during public comments, then you fill out the paper.
No, but y'all are gonna vote before the thing, so I wanna talk now.
We're gonna vote after the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
So either way, you'll be able to speak before the hearing.
And I even wrote a speech, so I wouldn't leave anything out like I usually do.
No problem.
Anyway, thank you very much for letting me address you this evening. The mayor knows. I'm Barbara White. I'm seventy-four years old. I've lived there almost entire life. I've raised children here, grandchildren, and I'm still raising one. Anybody wants him, I'll lend him out. Anyway, tonight, I'm asking you to vote yes for Spearmint Energy's Red E-Grit Battery Energy Storage System Project. I've lived through hurricane after hurricane in Texas City, sitting in the dark for days and weeks when it was too hot to breathe, watching all my food spoil, making life miserable and costly for working families. The Red E-Grit Project would give us something we desperately need. Reliable backup power when extreme weather hits our community, summer and winter. With Texas City growing and our electricity demands increasing every hot summer, this project will store clean energy to keep our lights on and our air conditioners running when we need them the most. Spearmint Energy has been completely open about their project and their safety protocols. They've answered every tough question thrown at them at community meetings. Plus, this will bring needed tax revenue for our schools and our city. This is a win-win for Texas City. I ask you to vote yes for the Red E-Grit Project. This is the kind of project that we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the community who wish to speak in favor of this zoning designation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, thank you. Uh, I'm Nick Coyle. I think most of you know me by now. I'm the Vice President of Development Spearmint Energy. We are developers for the Red E-Grit Project. I just wanted to let you know I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Also wanted to let you know that it's been great working with Ms. Golden and her staff to develop a project that meets all the needs of the city. Probably important to note that the ordinance, the proposed ordinance that you're discussing tonight, the Red E-Grit Project does meet all the design and safety standards of that ordinance. So just wanted to let you know that, um, we've put a lot of time into this project. Last year, I think all of you are aware that we were here with a project, got feedback from the city, and took that back to the drawing board and found a site that addressed all the city's concerns. I think we're confident that, um, we did a, um, solid job of finding a remote location that met all your needs. And, uh, just really look forward to moving forward with the project. So appreciate your support and consideration.
Thank you very much. Any other citizens wish to speak in favor of this zoning designation?
Yes, sir, Richard Hoakum. Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, I guess I'm, I'm really not far battery storage, but with not having them all through the city, maybe this one spot could be designated, since it is kinda out there in the prairie, that maybe you could concentrate all of the battery storages that the prior ordinance was talking about, get them out of the neighborhoods and put them all out there in one location. So God forbid you did have a getaway reaction, it would be out there and not in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want, sort of point of information, we don't have any battery storage systems in any neighborhoods and nor do we plan on putting any in any neighborhoods. And I believe it was stated to, uh, the public before that it's difficult to concentrate all the battery storage systems in one area, unlike we do in industrial complexes and refineries and things, because the battery storage systems usually have to be located in the proximity of the areas that they're servicing. So, um, while this one may be conducive for this one, I'm not sure if we'll be able to establish a concentrated complex of these types of operations. Uh, Ms. Golden, if I misspoke, and you can correct me if that's... Okay. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition of this zoning designation? All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, it was your pleasure.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mayor Protem Bowie to close the public hearing. That has been seconded by Commissioner Love. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to Agenda Items Six A. These items require preliminary zoning approval. Six A will to, we are to consider and take action on preliminary zoning approval for the Red E-Grit LLC for a zoning change of thirty-eight-point-six-five-three acres from District H Heavy Industry to District SP Site Plan for a Battery Energy Storage System located in an area south of the Gulf Coast Water Authority Canal, north of Moses Bayou, east of South Humble Camp Road, and west of property owned by the Galveston Bay Area Foundation. Uh, this is what you just heard in the public hearing. Uh, Ms. Golden, any additional comments?
No, ma'am. This is the action, um, item for you all to approve or disapprove of the preliminary zoning approval, um, of this rezoning. Um, the recommendation does include, um, conditions. Um, the conditions will be memorialized in a development agreement, which is also on your agenda as a consent item. The conditions include posting of financial security satisfactory to the city for the commissioning and decommissioning of the project, the installation of three thirty-thousand-gallon water tanks satisfactory to the fire marshal. The landscaping improvements and plating requirements are being deferred until there is, um, development in the area. There will be a private access easement provided to get to the site that will, um, need to be satisfactory to the city and provide, uh, ingress and egress for emergency response and public safety vehicles. Um, the security fencing and screening requirements have been worked out. There will be a, um, masonry compos, composed fence installed. Um, and then, uh, the posting of financial security for any damage to the public roads is also. So those six conditions, um, are recommended, um, as conditions for your approval of preliminary zoning and are, uh, again memorialized in the development agreement that's later on your agenda.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions, Ms. Golden?
I move to approve this item with the, uh, six conditions as well.
Second.
Uh, a motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this agenda item, seconded by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, Six B, Consider and Take Action on Request for an Extension of Time to Preliminary Zoning Approval for Lakeside Bayou Subdivision.
Ramari, I think there's a map for this one. Maybe approve master plan, let's see. Might be in the exhibits as well, we can get to it. Okay, so this is for the Lakeside Bayou Subdivision, which you all gave preliminary zoning approval, um, some time ago, but the, the, uh, zoning approval, it will expire. Your ordinances do provide for you to give extensions to them. Um, they have asked for an extension. We have looked at, um, they've, they've been in contact with us constantly. Um, they're continuing to work to develop, um, this subdivision. There's just a lot of pipelines to deal with, Tech Dot, um, the City of Dickinson, the City of League City, um, there's just, it's, it's, there's just a lot to be worked out. They've been diligently at it. They're just about done with everything. They're, they're right in the midst now of just finding the financing. And so we didn't want all that hard work to have to be redone in terms of bringing it back to you, so that's why we recommended they ask for this extension of time. The extension is actually until, um, August of two-thousand-twenty-six is what we're recommending as the, um, extension.
Commissioners, any questions of Ms. Golden on this agenda item?
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve Agenda Item Six B, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Uh, last but not least, in this, uh, preliminary zoning approval, Six C, Request for Extension of Time to Preliminary Zoning Approval for Alpha Omega Power LLC to Rezone from District F Light Industrial to District SP Site Plan for Development of a Best Project to be Located at seven-zero-one Highway one-forty-six North.
I think we've got a map of this one as well. Look in the exhibits. Can you turn it? The top is north. Okay, so this is a best project that has already been through the rezoning process. Y'all all approved it, gave it preliminary zoning approval last September, September fourth. This is the project that is located, um, on, uh, one-forty-six just north of where Golden Logistics is located right now. Um, it's a, it's a little over two-hundred megawatts, a little over four-hundred megawatt hours. Um, again, they've been through the process, everything was approved. Um, they just, uh, have not, within the twelve months, been able to get all the permitting, the building permitting requirements in. They have started that process. Um, and so just again, in the interest of not having to redo any of this, because nothing's changed, it's still a good project, they still met the requirements. We're recommending to you all, um, an extension of twelve months on this preliminary zoning approval.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. Any questions, Commissioners, about this extension request?
Motion to approve the extension of time for the preliminary zoning approval for Alpha Omega.
Second, Mayor.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bowie to approve this extension of time. That was, uh, motion made by Commissioner Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Knoxen. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. You had quite a bit to get through there. Uh, this time, we're up to public comments. In public comments, um, we have a couple of people who have requested to address the commission. Uh, Ms. White? Is Ms. White still here? Ms. Barbara White? You, you requested... You requested to address the commission, but you addressed him during the public hearing. I wanted to know if you still wanted to address the commission, or was that sufficient?
Everybody said yes.
All right.
And turned down the air to the heat.
Thank you very much. You gotta bring layers, bring layers, all right. Here we go. Next, we have Mr. Jose Boyce. Mr. Jose Boyce, let me remind those people who are addressing the commission, you have up to three minutes for your comment on something that we will be taking action on.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here, uh, let me give you the reference, because it's confusing in me. Uh, this is actually Commission Rule for Proceed, of Procedure Ordinance two-thousand-twenty-five dash fourteen. And I have some process-related queries. And this is regard to the minutes of the Wednesday, July sixteen meeting and today's August sixth, Commission Meeting Agenda Item Nine B. August sixth, Commission meeting, agenda item nine B. According to the Wednesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, Commission meeting and subsequent vote, the Commission voted to take action by approving Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. The minutes reflect that. By motion of Thelma Bowie and seconded by Jamie Clark, the vote carried four-three. The posted language clearly notes that the Ordinance twenty twenty-five fourteen, which was noted for action, was approved. And there were no references anywhere about first, second, or third readings that I could find. And this seems to be a required issue for ordinance process as I read the charter. The charter does say that first, second, and third are required for ordinance. Then surprisingly, the agenda for today's Wednesday, August sixth, Commission meeting shows regular item nine B, consider and take action of the same ordinance, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty fifteen dash fourteen. How can the Commission consider to take and take action, again, on an ordinance that was clearly approved July sixteenth? As an interested and active community voter, I'm totally confused. Our legislative processes should be clear and transparent and transparent to ensure trust and confidence over all elected commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I do want to bring a point of information and clarity to your concern, Mr. Boyes. Our charter states that the things that we are approving, the new ordinances, are to be done on three separate readings unless those three separate readings have been waived. And so last time we approved this, while it may have been intended to be done in one reading, we decided to go ahead and approve it in three separate readings. That was mentioned at the last Commission meeting. It was also published in the newspaper, and it was also a part of the background notes in the agenda. So although you are correct, it wasn't initially stated on the bulleted agenda item. It is well within our authority to err on the side of caution. We could have just approved it and been over with. But because some commissioners had some questions, we decided to approve it in three separate readings. So that's the best explanation I can give you. I hope that that works. Next, we have another person who has requested to address the commission, and that person is Mr. Robert Clem. Robert Clem wishes to speak on agenda item nine B.
Good evening.
Evening.
And if you could, could you pass that down for me, please? This will come into play, because obviously, through your words, you have answered the question concerning how this agenda is going to go because of the fact that you went from the one reading aspect of it, that clause, to the three, which is very prudent to go through this process so that we can clarify a few things. Now, what I'm handing you this evening is this. As I was going through to check the agenda item, I went through the city website. It states seven sixteen, which that was the date of the meeting, but there is a little bit of a problem. The, the opening slide says seven oh two. The YouTube channel says six sixteen. And then, as stated at the opening of the meeting, it was the second meeting of July. Words mean everything, dates mean everything. So, you know, I don't know what to say other than that, but you did clarify the other, so I won't continue on. So thank you for your time.
No problem. Thank you, sir. To those who may be wondering what he is speaking of, we stream our city commission meetings on a delayed broadcast. While some people do theirs live, our meeting is today, but it will be shown around Friday. You can look up any city commission meeting on our YouTube channel. We had a commission meeting, I don't think anybody can see this, but basically, we had a commission meeting, and when you go to the YouTube channel and pull up the meeting, one of the meetings has the wrong date on it. Okay? It is, I believe I just saw it yesterday, it's a July, I'm sorry, July second meeting, and it occurred June sixteenth, or something like that.
Because the meeting was July sixteenth, the slide says seven oh two, but the YouTube channel shows six sixteen.
Okay. So, so what you have just discovered there, ladies and gentlemen, is that we're all human, and somebody made a mistake. And what the mistake was, was putting the wrong date on the wrong meeting, and that will be corrected. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. That doesn't change anything we voted on, that just means something was posted with an error, and we go back and we fix that. There's probably not a city in America you can go to and not find an error. But we certainly want to put out the best information to our citizens, and we certainly want our citizens to bring it to our attention if something has been posted in error. So to that end, Mr. Clem, thank you very much. At this point, we have heard from those who wish to address the commission, and we will move on to what's next on the agenda.
Consent.
Consent agenda, thank you. Commissioners, you have before you on the consent agenda those things for your consideration. You have items eight A through F, eight A through F. If you'd like any of those pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this time.
Mayor, I'd like item F to be pulled off the consent agenda.
Item F? Okay, thank you very much. Any others, commissioners?
I move to approve. Items on the consent agenda, with the exception of item F.
All right. A motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve items A through E, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item eight F, Commissioner Knoxon, consider and take action on Resolution number two zero two five dash zero eight one, approving and awarding commission grant funds in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars to Texas City Four Square Church. This, as you all know, this is a, one of the commission grant funds. Commissioner Knoxon, would you like to speak on this and introduce the project?
Yes, sir. We have Pastor Tim Franklin from the Coffee Connection Four Square Church. They do a lot of work in the community, particularly with, partnering with the Gals County Food Bank. Every other Wednesday, they set up, a group of volunteers come out, and they volunteer to distribute food for veterans in our community. Pastor Franklin reached out to me with a need, so I'm happy to submit this application in front of the commission. I just wanted to see if any commissioners had any concerns, anything to share, talk about.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Franklin, would you like to have a few words and let us know about your operation?
Well, I also want to thank Commissioner Knoxon. He's come out several times to help pass out food. We, we work in conjunction with the food bank and a couple of veterans organizations to provide food for veterans who are dealing with food insecurity. Twenty twenty-four, we supplied food for approximately ten thousand people, and we'll probably go above that this year. And all the funds that Commissioner Knoxon is, is addressing here will go one hundred percent to provide food for veterans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Just a comment, Mayor. Mr. Franklin has been involved with the community for many, many years, and he's donated so much, so much money and so much time to a lot of different efforts. If he's responsible for this, I make a motion we approve.
A second. All right. Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve this commission grant, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Any further discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Franklin. We're up to the regular items. Regular item nine A, we're going to consider and take action on the third and final reading of ordinance number two zero two five dash zero six, amending the Texas City Code of Ordinances by creating chapter one sixty-two entitled Battery Energy Storage Systems, and amending Title fifteen entitled Land Usage, chapter one sixty entitled Zoning, to designate section one sixty point zero five one of the District SP Site Plan as a zoning designation for battery energy storage systems and similar projects. Ms. Golden.
Mayor, I had two babies in less time than it took to get this ordinance done. So this is the third and final reading. It did start over a year ago, almost two. It has enjoyed the full benefit of the legislative process. It has had input from staff, it has input from our own city attorney, from our outside counsel, it has had input from industry professionals, from trade groups, from TNMP, from lawyers for trade groups. It has been thoroughly, thoroughly vetted. I appreciate all that work that has gone into it, it's been to our planning board and zoning commission twice, and it, again, comes to you all with a recommendation to approve. I believe this is going to be a very helpful vehicle for Texas City to deal with these projects, not just now as they're being approved, but through the life and life cycle of the projects.
You're absolutely right. I concur with everything you said. Thank you very much. Commissioners, anybody have any questions of Ms. Golden?
Third reading, nothing's changed. I make a motion to approve the third reading, Mayor.
I second it.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Garza to approve this third and final reading, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we're going to do item B, consider and take action on ordinance number two zero two five dash one four, establishing the Commission Rules of Procedure and Order of Business. We don't have any particular changes on this one. Commissioners, you've had before you the items. Mr. Branson, is there something you want to add to that, or?
Second reading.
This is the second reading, the second of three readings on these Commission Rules of Procedure and Order of Business. We are establishing these Commission Rules and Orders of Proceeding and to be in compliance with our city charter, and hopefully be able to establish some guidelines and parameters as to how we operate as a commission.
So during the questioning period where you asked for specific feedback, how many people actually responded?
I had two people who submitted written responses and requests, and I had two more commissioners, I'm sorry, three commissioners who spoke with me verbally, and then I have one commissioner who did not submit anything or meet with me on anything.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
I second it.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Knoxon to approve the second reading of the Commission Rules of Procedures, seconded by Commissioner Clark. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
It looks like four-three again. Motion carries. Next, we will have item C, consider and take action on proposed ad valorem tax rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six through October one, twenty twenty-five through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, by a record vote and scheduled public hearings if necessary. We'll hear from our chief financial officer, Ms. Cynthia Rushing.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. This is an exciting time. It comes once a year where we are presented with our no new revenue tax rate. So this is the TNT, Truth and Taxation. This is where the county will calculate, the tax office will calculate our tax rate based on information that we've provided to the agency. Like I said, this is something that happens every year. Once we adopt this tax rate, it will support our operations in our general fund for the So there's a couple of important tax rates that they provide. One is the no new revenue tax rate, and this tax rate is consistent of the same revenue that was provided or that we received the previous year. So it's a bit challenging. It's a bit challenging to keep your revenue flat, while we know that cost of living is going up, we've got inflation, we have tariffs, we have all these things that are, that we're faced with. And so this is a no new revenue tax rate that gets provided to every agency, and so we're not different. So we have a no new revenue tax rate for the tax year twenty twenty-five. The other rate is considered a ceiling. It's the voter approval tax rate, and this is the highest tax rate that the tax, taxing unit may adopt without holding an election to seek voter approval of that rate. And then we actually will have an adopted tax rate, and that is what the commission will vote on and determine what the tax rate will be for the year of twenty twenty-five, which will support our fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. So the staff is recommending the no new revenue rate. So before you is a table, and it just giving you the taxable value, starting in FY twenty-two and all the way to current. So our taxable value has been increasing, like about, you know, between five and ten percent over the three, four years, and then it flattened out. So for FY twenty-six, in which the FY, I mean, which the twenty twenty-five tax rate was calculated again, so six point nine billion dollars, it's a smidge above what it was last year. So the proposed rate, you see, is highlighted in yellow, and then the next line is the no new revenue rate that's provided by the Galveston County Tax Office. So for tax year twenty twenty-five, the no new revenue rate is four seven eight four three three per one hundred dollar property value. And in that no new revenue rate, it's broken down in two components. One component is for M and O, which stands for maintenance and operations, and then the second component is for debt service or INS, which is interest and sinking. And then the VAR, which is the voter approval rate, this is the ceiling once again, is at six, sixty-four cents. When we calculate, I'm sorry, when we calculate the proposed tax rate or revenue, we will be looking at thirty-three million dollars in property tax. So again, the staff is recommending a no new revenue tax rate of four seven eight four three three per one hundred dollars. So we are actually reducing, this is the good news, we're actually reducing our property tax rate from last year. So last year was forty-eight, eight, six, three, five, and we're reducing it to forty-seven, eight, four, four, three, three, which is the no new revenue tax rate. This is the second year that we have been able to tighten our belts. I say it because, you know, there, there's room there, right? We can actually increase the, the tax rate to something higher, but we know that it is prudent of us to be fiscally responsible and say, is there ways for us to be more efficient in what we're doing? So we're driving a lot of efficiency in our processes and doing a lot of centralization in how we're handling operations. So I'm excited about being able to present to you this proposed tax rate of the four seven eight four three three, which is the no new revenue tax rate.
Thank you.
Here's a graph. Here's a graph. I love graphs. I love pictures. Sometimes words get lost, right? And so when you see the picture, that red line is the ceiling, and the, and the yellow line is the proposed tax rate, and then the green, the dotted green is the no new revenue rate. And so you can see from history, from FY '18, how we've been trending. And so it's a beautiful picture in the sense of we have really reduced our operational costs, driving some efficiencies, and not having to go nowhere near the actual ceiling. So we're bringing down the tax rate for our property owners. Really great news. So again, we are reducing the property tax rate from FY '25 for FY '26. So, and that difference, you may want to, you may ask, well, what's the difference? They seem pretty close in value. That is a difference of $704,000. So I know Fire presented the ambulances, right? So, you know, and it was, it was kind of difficult. I mean, you know, he's been in my office saying, hey, I need two, two new ambulances. And at $300,000, we could pay for two if we went up on that price, but we're going to figure out, we're going up on the tax rate, but we're going to figure out a way to be able to keep our operations whole, maintain the service level that we're providing to our residents in our community, and still be able to have a no new, have a, adopt the no new revenue tax rate, which means a reduced property tax rate. Again, this is just showing your calculation, but this is the property tax revenue that we are proposing and recommending for approval. And that's it. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, anybody have any questions of Ms. Rushing? I do want to say thank you, Ms. Rushing, so much for working with both myself and the department heads, trying to come to a tax rate that would complement the budget that we'll be proposing. The citizens of Texas City need to know how hard our finance department has worked to reduce their property tax rate in a growing city like the city of Texas City. When you're growing, as you saw, we need new ambulances, we need road repairs, we need staffing here and there. To reduce the citizens' tax rate in a growing city is a very difficult task, but it's one that we've been able to do for the past few years by either reducing our tax rate or aligning ourselves with a no new revenue rate. And we do that because of the sacrifices and efficiencies and the creative financing, as well as the recruitment and the attraction of new businesses and the supplements from our Economic Development Corporation and things like that. So we just have a lot of great things going on in Texas City, and to be able to present a lower tax rate to our citizens is something that we don't take for granted, and we certainly thank Ms. Rushing and our finance department. Any questions, any other comments? All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Let's do a record vote.
Oh, it is a record vote. They still need a, well, I guess we don't have to take a motion, they've got to take a record vote. So all those in favor of this adoption of the new tax rate, the no new revenue rate, please vote by raising your hand. All those in favor. All those who are opposed, please raise your hand. It looks like it was pretty unanimous. Thank you very much. Motion carries, and we have adopted the no new revenue. At this point, we're on Item D, Consider and Take Action on Ordinance Number 2025-15, Amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Texas City, Texas, Title III, Administration, Chapter 32, Law Enforcement and Fire Department, Section 32.009. Fire Department, Class of Positions, to reflect one fewer position in the classification of captain and one additional position in the classification of firefighter. The total number of authorized fire department personnel will remain unchanged. We'll hear from Chief Dennis Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. All that is very confusing. I'm going to just simplify it.
Thank you very much.
All of our positions have to be conveyed via ordinance, and we call that our authorized positions. We're going to have the same amount of authorized positions. Unfortunately, one of our captains, Captain Wendell Wiley, he was our EMS administrator, the previous EMS administrator, he had a few health issues which required him to retire early, so he just recently retired. He was a captain. All of our captain positions are currently filled, and so we're going to take that captain classification, that's just what we call the position, and move it to firefighter. And there is a cost saving in doing that. So right now, we don't have any need for a captain. When we get everything situated, and we may come back and change that, but for right now, we're just going to rename that position from a captain's position to a firefighter. So our numbers will remain the same, but those have to be conveyed via ordinance, so that's what we're doing here today. From time to time, we have to adjust those numbers to facilitate staffing.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, chief. Any questions about this, this move?
He said he was going to make it simple, Mayor.
Yeah, it didn't sound like he made it simple. Sorry.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Ordinance Number 2025-15.
Second. Motion has been made to approve this ordinance by Commissioner Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Love. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so very much. We will start with Commissioner Knoxon on Commissioner's comments.
I have a message for Ms. Barbara White. She wants me to tell everyone that school's going to be starting back next Wednesday, so just be vigilant of the kiddos on the corners, make sure you're not texting, driving through those hours, you know, where they're out there for the school bus. Also, was it last week, Ms. Barbara? We had the back-to-school drive?
Yeah.
Last week at Blocker Middle School, we participated in the back-to-school drive. It was just fantastic. Ms. Barbara was out there getting their writing and ordering, checking in line and telling us where to go and, you know, pick up the slack and hurry up and stuff like that. I think it was over 500 backpacks and over 250 pair of shoes that we were able to give out to the community, and...
Donated thanks to the city.
Donated thanks to the city.
Thank you so much.
Also, Valero Refinery, I haven't got to donate one there, too. But that's all I had in there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. White. Commissioner Love?
Stole my comment about the school, but for Dickinson IZ, most of my district encompasses that. They start school on August 13th and 14th. And then I have a, if you, this meeting was pretty long, it made me pretty hungry, so on the way home, if you stop by Ma's Pizza, 25% of what you spend on your bill will be donated to Mainland Crime Stoppers.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Bowie?
No comments. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Garza?
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
No comment. Thank you.
I know a lot of us have kids going to school, or we have teachers that we know, so my prayers are with all of them that we have a good, safe school year this year.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I echo those sentiments. I just want to say as we get ready back to school, is pay attention to our surroundings, particularly the buses that are stopped on the side of the road, onboarding and offboarding kids. Be respectful of that stop sign whether it comes out or not. We want to make sure we're paying attention to our surroundings. Thank you, Commissioners, for your presence today. I know it's been a long day. We had a budget workshop prior to this meeting, for those of you who don't know, and so we just appreciate your participation. There's none else? We will ask our staff if any staff has any updates or things that they would like to share with the community. Mr. John Branson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Commissioners, residents of Texas City, I want to ask you to mark on your calendar Saturday, September 6th. That will be the Cultural Arts Foundation, City of Texas City, Texas City Music Festival. It's going to be a great evening of entertainment. Three different artists will be performing. Gates open at 5:00 PM. The first artist comes on at 6:00 PM. That's Bree Bagwell. The second artist after her will be Ally Walker, and then the third artist will be Kyle Park. It's free to the public. Come on out, invite your friends. It's going to be a great night. It's going to be held right over here, right behind the convention center. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We had a blast last time. Look forward to another. Ms. Nicole Miller, Recreation Insurance.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. So, we have updates. Our registration for our girls volleyball is happening now, so be sure to sign up. Our Nestler Family Aquatic Center, it goes weekends only, starting this weekend, and our next adaptive tennis event is at the Lowry Center on August the 16th. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate you, citizens of Texas City, all the staff and workers who hung out. We appreciate y'all.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Sir, I'm glad everything finally worked out.
Yeah.
Back in there.